Hi, friends. We're going to call tonight's planning commission meeting for August 24th to order. So may I have a roll call please, Ms. Ashley?
Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Selman?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Brookman?
Here.
Commissioner Dale? Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Thank you. So now we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner, let's see, Adams, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we're going to move to the portion of the agenda for public comments that, for items that are not on the agenda. So you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting and public comments that are not on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the entire group. So do we have any written comments at this time, Ashley?
There were no written comments.
Oh, right. And do we have any public comments on items, again, not on the agenda? May I also let everybody in the audience know that Agenda Number Six has been removed from this evening's agenda and will be re-atomized at another future meeting. But should you have a comment about it, now is the time to indeed get one.
I do.
Could you approach the podium and state your name and address? Thank you.
My name is Jamie Maddox. I live on the 1800 block of Elmer Avenue, and I'd like to get a copy of the agenda today since I don't have one.
Ben, are they out in the? All right. Thank you. So now we'll move on to appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdictions. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the Planning Commission meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with the Public Health Guidance for Social Distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber. If an attendee doesn't have a facial covering, one may be provided. Comments may be either made at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Agenda and/or Any Agenda Modifications. I like how we changed that. So our minutes, well, actually, approval of the agenda for this evening's agenda. This is still weird for us. So I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda removing Item Six.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So approval of the minutes from the July 27, 2022 meeting. If there are any modifications necessary, otherwise we'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right. Thank you all. Business Item Number Five, Agenda Number Five, Amended Development Plan 17-01, Woodward Street Hotel, Spring Hill Suites. And I would like to ask Mr. Doug Libby to give his staff presentation. Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Chair Blake. So this item is an amended development plan, 1701. Those of you who were on the commission on February 15, 2018, would remember when the original development plan came before your commission and was approved. Originally, it was, and that's Spring Hill Suites. The project site is located southwest of the intersection of Highway 99 and Highway 20 or Calusa Avenue. It's a 3.36 acre site on the south side of Woodward Street. It's approximately 450 feet west of Highway 99. You can see from the aerial that Meeks Lumber borders the site to the west. You have ETRV as well as nursery located to the northeast. You have some light industrial immediately to the east, abandoned railroad right-of-way immediately to the south, and further to the south is another hotel. So looking at the differences between the project from what was previously approved and what is proposed tonight is there is proposed an increase in rooms by eight, so going from 83 rooms to 91 rooms. The building size is proposed to increase from 58,000 square feet to 73,000 square feet. Now, on that point, I also think it's important to recognize that although that's an increase of 15,000 square feet, the original project had a 6,000-square-foot conference banquet hall area. It's only actually proposed now to increase in square footage by 2,000 square feet. So the extra space that you're seeing is going to be the rooms, it's going to be hallways, other areas, storage areas, things of that nature. Parking spaces. The original project had 107 parking spaces. Well, this revised project has 189 parking spaces, so that's an increase of 82. Valet parking spaces have increased by 26, so the project has had an increase of parking of 108 spaces. So a total of 279. And so although it's not required to go through this, I think it's come up in the past as far as EV charging stations, because that's come up at hotel public hearings before. So if you go into the state building code, there's a table, and due to the size, number of parking spaces required, this site would actually require 28 EV parking spaces. So due to, when you hit over 200, the table in the building code says you have to do 10% and round up. Okay. So if you look at the two diagrams here, you'll see the left side is the existing approved project. And you'll see some of the differences from the original project. If you look here on the left side and then you look at the proposed project, you see where the expanded conference room is. I think it's also important to look on the site plan. You look at the southeast corner of the property, and then look over here, you'll see the expanded parking. They've been able to acquire some, get a lease on some Caltrans property, which is provided for the additional parking that's needed for this facility. Largely, the rest of the site plan parking layout remained largely similar. This touches on surrounding uses that I've already kind of touched on. Building design. So modern-looking features of the building has articulated roofline, includes a variety of building materials. Now, staff has recommended adding some design-related conditions in regard to building lighting and window treatments to further enhance the building design. And what we went into in your staff report is to add depth to the wall surface. The upper floor windows should be indented at least two inches or utilize trim around the windows. The building will have exterior wall lighting, and so we're asking for that to be of a decorative type and not just a type that you would see typical of a home. And material utilized for the horizontal articulation should fully wrap around the So we have some of the images of what the building will look like, and these were all included in the staff report packet. Now, the project does propose increasing the parking, as I noted, by 108 total spaces. There are some parking issues remaining. Some of the hotel and parking area will be located on property leased by Caltrans. There's some ambiguity in the parking section of the zoning code where it applies to banquet or conference centers. And what we mean by that is if you looked in the zoning code, it doesn't specifically call out for a conference center, or it calls out for exhibition halls, dance halls, churches, assembly halls. So as a result, we had an updated parking study done for the project, and that was done by Katie Anderson and Associates. You know, they looked at the issues, and they came back to us, and I think that at the end of the day, it's really important to this statement that's been highlighted or bolded, that parking situation for this amended project will be improved over the previously approved project. Staff has added a condition that states if the Caltrans-owned property isn't available for parking in the future, meaning Caltrans terminates the lease for some reason, then they would be required to come back to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. Now, with regard to State Route 99 and Woodward Street will be impacted by the project, obviously. Now, Woodward Street currently is a substandard condition road. It's narrow, it lacks curb gutters and sidewalks. From this project, Woodward Street will be improved to accommodate the new traffic. However, because it is only a 40-foot-wide right-of-way, the street cannot be built to full city standards. So a condition has been added that addresses this, and the road will be widened, and curbs, gutters, sidewalks will be added as right-of-way conditions permit. Regarding site landscaping, trees, shade cover, shrubs, ground cover, all of what has been proposed meet or exceed the city's requirements. So because of the changes to the project, staff was required to do a new environmental document. So a new initial study was prepared, consistent with the California Environmental Equality Act and the guidelines. There were impacts identified for geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, tribal cultural resources. However, mitigation measures in each of those categories were added to minimize impacts to a less-than-significant level. And so as a result, a mitigated negative declaration has been proposed for this project. So based on everything before you, staff feels that we can recommend approval, and we've provided some recommended findings for you, that the site with the conditions added can be used in as of adequate size shape to accommodate the use. The streets serving the site are adequate to carry the quantity of traffic generated. The site design of the buildings and scale of the project will complement the neighborhood. The application satisfies our flood findings, and I'm happy to say that this area, as well as most city, now has 200-year flood protection. So staff is recommending that you conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to adopt the mitigated neg deck, conditions of approval and mitigation measures, and approve the amended development plan, DP 1701. I do want to note that we did receive last-minute comment later, kind of a generic form, from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. They're typically interested in stormwater runoff. The conditions generated are frankly boilerplate and are implemented by the city as far as implementing stormwater requirements. Those are already incorporated into the conditions. We also received kind of a boilerplate letter from California Department of Fish and Wildlife. It noted that if the project site was within 300 feet or a stream, that we needed to do raptor nesting studies, of which this project is not within 300 feet. So with that, that would conclude my comments. Be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, walk me through. I'm a visual. So I understand we're Woodward going north, there's that turn lane that you can go in across 99. How, and when you're coming down south, is it just a quick exit right off of 99? Or do they have to go around where that turn is, where you go back where the Best Western's at? Is that going to open up?
So they would be required, Woodward is the sole access in and out of that facility.
Oh, okay. That's kind of dangerous going across. I just, I, just getting in and out of there. I mean, if you have a big banquet that night, or, I mean, is that going to, the traffic and, I'm surprised there's only one way in.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and it's going to be, you're looking at, this would end up being a right-in, right-out access.
So if you're going north, you're going to go across 99 traffic to get in, right?
Yeah, so you're not going to be able to cut over. Like, if you're heading north on 99, there's, you might remember at that location, there's a landscape strip in the middle of 99 at that location.
You have to U-turn then?
Right, yes.
Okay, so there is a turn there now.
No, there is.
There is a turn there now.
Right, that, there is a break there.
Yeah.
There is.
So people are going to take that break across 99?
Correct.
Okay, wow, that's scary. I just thought, I mean, I proved it the first time, I get that, but I don't know, is there any other way? I mean, when you turn, where you turn on, off of 99, was it the Best Western's there? There's Mr. Steak going back? Is there a way of?
Sizzler.
Or whatever. That's how old I am, Mr. Steak, whatever. Sizzlers.
That is further to the south.
Yeah, but I mean, is that even possible?
It's not possible.
Okay. Wow, okay.
And your traffic, oh, sorry. Through the chair? Your traffic engineers looked at this part, and they've, you guys have assessed the impacts related to that?
That is, that is correct. Remember that the project was originally approved.
2018, right?
Yeah, 2018. Had a traffic study done at that time. So this is, this project is looking at, can accommodate the additional traffic beyond what was already approved.
So associated with eight rooms, you have to score footage on the conference center, correct?
I'm sorry.
The additional eight rooms and the additional 2,000 square foot.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair?
Chair, oh, sorry. I had one more question.
Just go ahead.
Could you show me where the pedestrian path is that they're looking at improving that's by this particular project? Which is where the old railroad was? Can you show me where that lies? Was it the front? So where's Woodward in that?
So Woodward is right here.
Okay, I'm upside down. Okay. Okay, so it runs along the back of the?
Yeah, the south, along the south side of the property.
Okay. Okay. I do have a couple of more questions, but I would like to maybe get the public comments first.
You got it.
May I?
Yes, go.
Very much.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Libby, you mentioned that the only ingress and egress is through Woodward, but I happen to know from personal experience that there is an ingress and egress directly off Calusa through the Leslie Pool Supply Center, and then also the old work-ready where Elite Tire and Service is. So is that something that's just there, and we hope people don't know what's there, and they don't use it often, or is there, or are there going to be no access?
Would not be a primary access.
Okay, all right. So it's still available to folks to use that?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's fine. Now, and also to clarify, did you, in answering the question from Commissioner Selman, I believe she asked about access to Highway 99? Is there a limit? If I'm heading out to 99, is there a limit on my crossing and making a left-hand turn?
No, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay, so they're putting in a?
It'd have to be walking.
Yeah, it would be a right-out.
Okay. All right. Why don't we, why don't we go ahead then and?
Let me, let me open a public hearing, and then we'll have you come, okay? So we'll go ahead and open a public hearing for Agenda Item Number Five. Do I have anybody? Do you have something to say? He's all scared.
May I say something about this?
Yeah, you can have public, public comment.
Step up to the podium.
Go to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Derek Watkins, and I've used that access to access a lot of the businesses that are back there, like the MJV Welding. And it's a nightmare to get in and out of there. If this is proposed like this, there's only one way in, what about emergency services? And where do the people get out if they want to walk to, say, the movie theater or any of other facilities that we have to offer?
Thank you.
Because I feel that you're trapped in that corner with no pedestrian access unless you cut through Leslie's Pool, walk over to the gas station at 76, or if you come out to the highway, you're on the highway. So that's my comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Anybody else have a public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. And why don't we start with you and travel all the way down to Lori.
I'd just like to hear what the applicant has to say with respect to some of these, these traffic issues. You are the applicant, are you not, sir? Yeah, thank you.
Would you like to? Yeah, thanks. Welcome.
My name is Simon Gill. I am the applicant. Only reason I kind of interfered in it is because I was in the previous and kind of did a lot of the research. So yes, there is a lot of traffic. I agree. Woodward Street has, when you're going down northbound, has a right-in, or a left-in, I'm sorry. So it does have a left-in, which is an easy left-in as long as the lights are turned red over there. So you won't have any issues coming in. Pulling out of a conference center, I would also agree that a left-out is dangerous. So if Caltrans chooses to cut the left-out instead of crossing the three roads, trying to get on the highway, I agree that should be taken away. We should just have an access left-in, no left-out. They should be able to pull out right-out. They'll go to Gilwiki Crossing, they will make a U-turn to head northbound. That would answer most of those questions. The sidewalk and all those improvements around Woodward Street, it's ADA compliance, wherever everybody's coming, as a gentleman says, if you want to go to the movie theater or anything, it's already designed the way it is. I have no answers to that. It is designed for, I think you guys were on one of the planning commissions, some of you guys recall that, this whole area is supposed to be turned into a butterfly or a flyover for 9920 interstate change. So some of the Caltrans parking, all that stuff is going to be taken away, the sidewalks, everything's going to be taken away, so there is going to be no access to the highway. That's where the future center, Civic Boulevard, comes in, and that's where the crossing, how you talked about, sizzlers? That's where they're going to try to make a, cut across where all this traffic that's coming from the hotel convention center or from the welding facility will go towards the Best Western and sizzlers. We don't know, and that's kind of, you guys would know, have a better idea when that ever happens. So those are the future, how the traffic will be coming out and being sure to be safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Simon. Does anybody have any more specific questions for our applicant while he's at the podium?
I just.
Please.
I do, thank you. With respect to the additional parking places that are slated for the area that you have under lease with Caltrans, what's the term of that lease?
It's a five-year increments.
Five-year increments, okay. So in the event, then maybe this is a question for Mr. Libby, but in the event that the commission approves this, they go into construction, those spots are built, that building's built out, it looks to me like to the edge of where that piece is now, and those, Caltrans ceases the lease, where, I understand you had a condition in there, but if it's already built, there's really not much to go back to talk to the planning commission about. So has there been any, any conversation about what that looks like if that property's lost after development?
For us, it would be, we volunteer to say that we will cease on the banquet side, and we return those interim rooms. So we would eliminate all those access parking, which is 60 parks.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Anything else to add to that, Doug? Looked like you had something to say.
I was just going to add that the, that the building is proposed within their parcel, not the lease area. I can tell you that Caltrans has not programmed the interchange at 99 and 20 till probably 2035 or later. So I think it's likely, unless the Caltrans has other plans, that that lease would be extended a number of times.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. So are you, are you saying that what's changed since 2018 is the ability of getting these leases from Caltrans? Is that why you're now proposing eight more rooms and all additional banquet space?
I think it's the, the applicant has been able to come to an agreement with Caltrans, yes, that allows him this new opportunity.
Okay. So that wasn't available back in 2018?
You know, Doug, if I could add to it, I apologize, I missed the beginning of the speaking. I don't want to restate anything, but I don't want to put Mr. Libby in a bad spot with being with the city for three months, and then I'm having some history with the project. So I just want to circle back that this is an amendment. So in, in staff's eyes, this is really a better project, because now we've gained more area, we have more parking available because of those parcels, and we have more access onto the West Onset Frontage and onto the future Civic Center. And so Caltrans really looked at that and approved it too. And then also, when we, we approved this project in 2018, staff looked at it as this either-or option, kind of like if they get the, the Caltrans property, or if they don't get the Caltrans property, really how we looked at it with these updated conditions and with this amendment is that this is a standalone, and it will work if the Caltrans thing doesn't happen at all. And that, and with review with Caltrans, that was really how the discussion, because we didn't have an agreement in place at the time when we were doing the review, that we really looked at this project like that wasn't going to happen. If he does work that out, hey, great. But for, for city staff, we're still supportive of the project how it stands alone.
Thank you. And then just to confirm, we're not, I mean, we're not trying to approve this project tonight. We are just trying to approve the extent, the additional rooms and additional banquet space, correct?
We're approving the amendment, right? The action item today is an amendment to the use permit where he's upsizing the number of rooms.
Correct. So this is already getting built, it's just a matter of how many rooms and how much space they're building. I just want to make everybody's clear on that. Okay.
It, yes. It is.
Okay, that's all I've got, thank you.
Got the platform. Go for it.
No, I, I agree. It's beautiful. Yeah, and I wasn't here in 2018, and I think it's gorgeous, and I, we used to have the upholstery head in the front out there, and I know it's a nightmare getting in and out of there. I guess my only concern is, I definitely am okay with the project, but absolutely that 99 going in and coming out, there is going to be an accident. You just know what's going to happen, especially if you have a big banquet. I mean, we can't foresee the future, but, you know, the project's beautiful, but it has nothing, obviously, to do with you, but it is a nightmare over there, so. I wish we could come up with, you know, an exit out of there somehow, Mr. Moody. You know how I like roads.
Well, I will add that definitely in these conditions that this applicant's paying his fair share for the improved Civic Center, which is the ultimate fix.
The goal, yeah.
As we develop some of those properties in the back, and then we get them out to Civic Center.
So we will get them out there.
And then Caltrans asked us, and we put it in there as the requirement, that they reserve the right, that they turn, they could block the left turns in.
Okay.
And so that's going to be continually monitored, and when, it's Caltrans state right-of-way, so if they feel that it gets to a point that's dangerous, they, they've asked it in the condition that they can allow, that could be closed off, and it would be a right-in, right-out.
Then I see. Hallelujah, great project.
Thank you. Hi, it's not bad. Because I-
Well, we've already missed the 11-minute mark, so go for it, Lori.
Caltrans is on the hook as far as the ingress/egress goes. They're going to be the ones who make the decisions because it's on the state route. So we really don't have a lot of input there. It's going to be between staff and the project. My request is, number one, my comment, just my opinion, I would prefer to see insetts on your windows rather than trim. That would be my one comment. I think in the long term, an inset is going to be cleaner and better, and we're not going to have damage to trim that you're going to have to repair, et cetera. So that's just my opinion. My request would be in regards to the EV stations, and this comes from a public comment that we had had on a previous project, is to put in the multiple-type stations rather than just the singular-type stations, so that you can charge multiple types of vehicles rather than just one type of vehicle. And that was something that was a complaint, that this person has the car, and she has one charging station between Yubus City and Marysville where she can charge her vehicle. And the place that she does charge it is a multi-type service. So that would be my request. I don't know if we can make that any type of a condition, but just to share that.
I like that. I think we should put that as a condition in our city somewhere.
So there's probably three or so standards that are out there. It's kind of coalescing around a couple, Tesla being one, and then the abbreviation CCS for the other, which you'd see like the newer electric cars. It's becoming more typical to have those two charging stations type, the plugins, available. We are looking at doing an update to our electric vehicle charging permitting ordinance, and that's going to be coming forward, and we can look at that. But I wouldn't want to require anything more than what the state currently requires.
All right. And just maybe when it's built, that it meets the highest standard.
Great idea.
Other than that, love the project. I think this is going to look great driving in to our community, and when and if they ever get an overpass done, it's in the perfect spot, so.
That's the truth. Yes. So going back to the EVCs, is that written into our conditions, or because it's a state standard, it doesn't need to be?
It's a state standard that they have to meet certain requirements.
It says 28, you said, for this project?
Yeah, that's, that requirement actually comes from the state building code.
Can you remind me what that is? I just, I'm not very keen on it or familiar with it.[1790.98] Or familiar with it. So what, is there a percentage?
Oh, so it.
Yeah, what was?
Yeah, it's based on the number of parking spaces, but what they say is once you hit the threshold of like two hundred spaces or more. Then the number of EV spaces has to be ten percent.
Okay.
And that's just a matter of, all new projects that come in have to comply with those, those standards.
Awesome. And I love, I love that we're getting a bigger banquet hall in our community. It's very difficult to find. Spots to hold events, so much appreciation and I think it looks beautiful. So with that, if there are no other comments or concerns, we'll look for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I, I have motion to adopt a resolution to approve the environmental assessment twenty-two oh eight. By adopting a mitigated negative declaration subject to the conditions of approval and mitigation measures and approve amended. Development plan seventeen dash zero one Woodward Street Hotel Spring Hill Suites. On three point three six acres located along the south side of Woodward Street approximately four hundred and fifty feet west of state route ninety-nine. Assesses parcels number fifty-eight zero four one zero one zero, zero one one, zero one seven and zero one eight.
All second.
Thank you. So we'll do um, let's do a roll call vote Ashley, is that's okay?
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brookman?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Selman?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Schaefer?
Yes.
Chairperson Blake?
Yes. Congratulations. We look forward to improvements. Thank you. And again, agenda item number six has been removed from this evening's agenda, so we'll look to. Doug Libby again to provide us with an update on future agenda items.
Absolutely. So I think first thing to note, we will be canceling the September fourteenth planning commission meeting, which means we will be back together again. On September twenty-eighth. Where we will have, at this point, we have three projects slated to come before you. We have uh the uh minor. Expansion at the Twin Rivers Charter School. It's a use permit amendment. And so they have a requirement to put in a certain number of pre-K. Classrooms to match with what they already have and they're proposing to do that. And then they have a multipurpose room, so it's, it's a small. Expansion, but it's an important one for, for the school. Uh so that will be coming before you. We also have a proposed rezoning uh. For corner of Franklin and Gray, there's an existing house there where they're gonna be looking at wanting to transition that so they could put in a. A doctor's office. So it's residential today, they're gonna go convert the residents into an office. Northeast corner. And then the last item is the, uh we have, we'll have a parcel map for you. Um so between, just to the east. Of uh Panera, there is going to be parcelling off a small piece of land. So that um I think a dental office is gonna be about there, so.
What was that road again?
For the last project, uh it's gonna be at the uh UBS Center Marketplace of the mall.
Okay.
Just to the east of Panera.
Oh, Panera, I was like, what road was that? Okay, that's why, okay. I've never heard of that road, okay.
Well, I also wanted to note, cause we, we did have some, some emails. That we were intending to have digital releases of commission agendas. And we had reached out and said, did anyone need a device in order to receive the agendas? I didn't receive any comments back, so I'm assuming. You all are, have plenty of iPads and.
Is there Wi-Fi in here?
There is.
Alright, so I'm good.
If I could clarify, is there a functioning easily to access speedy Wi-Fi? That's the question.
Yeah, because it, for instance, like I have a MacBook, but if I need an iPad, would that be simpler? I'm sure you guys have a stash.
We could check if you'd like to, if, if we do have interest for, for any tablets or something, I just, you need to let us know.
You're still gonna send them digital to our email addresses and we can print it if we want to basically, oh, okay.
Certainly, if, if someone, he doesn't have that ability and would really like to have a printed packet, we're certainly willing to do that. We're just trying to. Go a little bit more paperless.
Oh, so you want us to bring it here?
You could bring, bring your, yeah, print it or bring your, your tablet.
Okay, got it. Alright, now I'm on board, but no, I'm good.
Well, and so that's why, I wanna make sure this is clear. That's where I wasn't, I didn't hear any feedback back and so I wanted to make sure everybody took that in. And knew where we were at. And so I don't mind having them packaged and delivered. It's a lot easier for us to push the send button. But it, but I, but I don't, at the same time, if it's valuable, it's valuable. I love my hard copy. I get a hard copy put out too. And I don't want you having to print it out on the printer in order to do that.
That's what I'm gonna do.
And so, but with that too, if somebody was on the verge, I'll get you an iPad, we'll get with IT, we'll make sure you have operating accurate, fast. Wi-Fi access, but i- if somebody's on the verge, we'll, we'll get you an iPad. Uh but if you still want the hard copy, we'll still get you the hard copy.
But intent is that starting next month, we would push out your agenda packets electronically.
So who, so raise your hands if you want a hard copy, I guess, is, is what I wanna, so I heard.
Lori.
And you can change your mind in the future.
And I can, and I can print it out. I don't have a problem with it.
No, no, I don't want, I don't want you to print it out. I just don't want to waste it if nobody looks at it. You know, and running around to do it.
Jot down things.
Hard copy. Okay, so we have four, four hours of six one hard copies.
But you know, and I'll, I'm.
I'll probably just, we'll, we'll reevaluate as a staff here and figure, and figure it out, but um. But that's where I don't, I don't wanna push that people are printing it out and you're getting half packages and not. We like to have it bound, bound in, in particular. But maybe what that do, maybe we could talk on our side. If we give it out electronically. We could hit that date on Wednesday and then if we don't get, or Thursday, and if we don't get to giving you the packet. Till Friday or, or, or is that, or if it comes a little later than the electronic, then it gives us a little more time.
I do not, if, if you're going electronic, I'll take electronic. I don't, I used to be a city clerk and I do not want you guys to have to manage two different types of. Of implementation. So if you're, if you're gonna go all electronic, I'll go electronic.
We're, I'm trying to get slowly into the computer age. I'm a little bit slower than some of my young staff. Um and so, but I, I could respect having a hard copy and so we'll, we'll see if we can come up with a balance. So we'll, we'll talk on our side right now, but. It sounds like we've heard that there's still a desire for, for some, some of that you feel. So we'll come back.
We're on that verge of age where we went electronic and we're not over the hump yet. You know, the next younger group that comes in will be that electronic age.
I think mine is being on Zoom for three and a half years. I kinda like having paper to look at. No, I'll try it for a while. But I'm with Lori, if we get to that point, I can make.
Like the milkman.
That is all I have, chirp link.
Okay, sorry that was a little discombobulated, but nonetheless, we'll figure it out.
Figure it out.
Alright, cool. Alright, so Ben, you're up again buddy. Development Services Director's required.
Front and center tonight.
Okay.
Um we'll make it quick. Um Ashley put together a real nice development services update. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see that in their email.
Printed it out.
What? You printed it?
It's on my desk.
And hopefully didn't take all your. But um, so with that, you know, I could hit some highlights, but um there's a lot still going on. Definitely the residential um. Homes are, I think, taking a little bit of a, it's slowing down a little bit, you know, some of these plant, these, these subdivisions and subdivision maps that were really. Push, push, push and start to kind of get a little um. Slowed down a little bit. Uh but we're still working through the entitlements and, and working through a lot of those and it's putting some work. Regarding building, maybe if everybody saw the building stuff, kind of what's going on. You know, the planning is all the stuff that we hope to come, but it really hits the rubber when they actually build. So building permits recent, recently issued, um and then also what's, what's under review. Those are some of the big ones with AmpliHealth remodel is a big one, the Spring Hill Suites that we just reviewed tonight. Boot Barn, Turner's Outdoor, the Refuge is doing a new hood, Sam's Club's got a remodel, Happy Vikings doing their expansion. Five Below is going on, you got the new train um facility um for softball. Um Hampton, Hampton Inn Suites, um and so you could kind of go through those, but those are all good ones to, to definitely check out and if there's any questions, hit. Um Ashley, uh me, or, or any of the staff and we could kind of give you the particulars on it so you, you know what's going on in town. Um the, the other thing that I wanted to bring up tonight was um the calendar invites and so. I, I know what happens for me is that when we do a calendar invite, that's every second and fourth Wednesday for the year. Um it, it kind of.
Excuse me.
You, you kind of start to forget about it and play in your life around it. And so um what we're thinking as a staff is it, um you know, since we. We're kind of being on the schedule based on ability and, and how we could push the packages out and, and review the information, we're pretty much landing on the fourth. Um Wednesday of the month, that second meeting of the month. Um and we were thinking about pushing out a, a, a calendar invite. The month before or maybe up to two months depending on what you want. So I just don't do a blanket. Uh calendar invite for the year. I, I actually push it out for, for like a formal, hey, we know this one's set, we're gonna notice it, it's gonna be on. And it goes on a calendar invite, so then maybe that helps on your side for planning. I don't know if you have a preference for a month versus two months or. Six weeks or, or what, but once we start getting over two months, it starts to get a little dicey if it's ready to come forward or not.
I just have my calendar marked for second and fourth Wednesday and it's just there.
And it's, and it's a bonus if, if you cancel, we're like, oh yeah. That it's still blocked off, so.
We can leave it for the whole year.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then just we send out a deletion at a certain time.
Yeah, if that's alright with you.
I just, that's totally fine. I just wanted to know if, if it was not working how it was, so it sounds like it is.
Oh no, if it's not broken.
Like you Jackie, I have every Wednesday night of the month blocked off, so.
Is the plan to continue the ability to have virtual into the future?
So the, the plan is to have the ability for them to be zoomed so people can um monitor. But the current plan is that if somebody wants to participate, they have to come in.
Okay, so the commissioner component of being virtual is gonna be ending.
The public would need to come in for the hearing.
Okay.
Um regarding, I have to check into that. I know there's some laws that had to be extended about the virtual. My understanding is um. Yeah, you know, I'll, I'll, let me double check on that. You know, to find out if I could have a one-off, cause in the past, we were able to call in or virtual in. And so, and so I'll, I'll get with the attorney and, and just confirm where we're at with renewing the, those various COVID emergency laws and the virtual aspect to see where that's at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Question concerning this, who are the Sacramento Regional Conservative Court? Clean up? I don't know.
That's the new CCC. It's the Sacramento Region CCC, basically Conservation Corps.
Okay.
Um and so we had, we, we got a grant um. A few years ago, a couple of years ago that we were systematically cleaning up the, the bike pass and. Second Street down at the end, um in different areas and so. We've actually, that grant's expired, we've used it all up, but we're trying to get another one to come through.
Nice, okay. Wasn't sure. And um before I let you go, you know. I'm going to ask about the moratorium because another one popped up.
Vapes?
Yes. So I need, I need to keep pressing you guys because I really wanna see it happen for our community before it gets out of control. When my parents are coming, driving down Kalusa and they're like, oh my word, another one popped up and they're noticing and they're pretty. You know, la la la, let's go to Linda's, that's what they do. So um I'm just concerned, they just keep. And obviously there is an environment, I mean, there, there's a economic benefit, otherwise they wouldn't keep popping up. In some capacity, I don't know if it's for our city necessarily. So I'm just, please let me know what we can do about that.
I, I owe you and the commissioner, we'll give you a status.
And I don't know if my fellow commissioners are on board with me, but.
Side segue on these things is that um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A- Ashley, um we, we sat through um one of these presentations the other day. It's called Placer. I think it's called Placer. So it's a new software, it's, it's really like the big brother, right? So you have these companies now that are tracking everybody's phone. Anything and everything that you do. And so they have this company, it's called Placer, it's becoming kind of a national leader. And, and it's crazy. It, it literally is crazy what they know about you. So we pick on any business, you, you Google it, you punch in the address. Or you say, hey, pick a business. So I said, give me the surf through. So, so it flies over. UBS City zooms in like I'm on Google Maps, picks um surf through and then you say, give me the data and then it, then it has. Then it literally runs the analysis, it has all the analysis on it that knows that, hey, this thing is running two hundred and eleven thousand cars. Of that are accuracy, you know, we actually physically have data from like fifteen percent of that and then they expand. You know, they, they interpret, they do the statistics on it to know what the percent, and they get within a ninety-five percent, you know, percentile of accuracy. On this and then they know that everybody, twenty percent of the people that are leaving there go to Chick-fil-A, thirty percent of the people are going to Target. After they go there and they all came from, they came from this location, they spent so much time here and then they go here or there. And so it's for marketing, so if you wanna put a sign up that's, you know, at the end of surf through that says, hey, go to Taco Bell. You, you know, you got twenty percent of the people are hungry for Taco Bell afterwards and so. The, so it's crazy and then you click on it and it has all the data from every similar business in town. So you click one button and then it shows what the quacky surf is in Roseville or whatever it's called. And, and, and quick quack and it, it, it shows the data and then it shows how well it's doing compared to those and then in, in. So instantly at a click of a button, you can pick any business right now and kind of know the business model, how well it is. And so then you click on another button and then it runs, what does UBS City need? Because it knows what people are traveling to go use, right? And guess what it comes up with? Vape shops. It's your number one. And, and I think that's part of the reason why it's getting a lot of this traction is because it also, the, the analytics also follow. It follows the social media, so it knows if people are talking or posting stuff about certain things and then it knows what people are traveling and spinning to. And then it also pulls in the data from um the, the, you know, from the police department and, and so. It's quite wild, but I will tell you, it was kind of depressing to see that the number one need was um a vape shop.
My question is the need by whom, you know, who, who implies it?
But this is what's going out into the business world, it's basically that, that shows up.
No, I get it, but it's also, we have one of the highest tobacco use rates. We also have one of the highest cancer. Um unintentional injury. I mean, there's so many things that is wrong with our community that trickle down to. Our ability to ensure our built environment is a helpful, you know, place to be well and I don't know that. And, and, and the re, you know my other issue, those smoke shops are rarely selling, you know. Tobacco products. I mean, it, the, the paraphernalia is what I'm most concerned about.
That's all. Is it, is it something that um we as just citizens, you know, say in Michelle or I, or anybody to go to the council to talk about? This is something we don't want in the community anymore, just because they are saying these are good tax sales. I mean, is that something, is, would, would that be where we start then? To advocate?
And this is where I, I owe you a report and I'm gonna have to get this back to you before the month, but, but what I'm thinking out loud. Is that it has to be initiated action. The initiated action can be done by the planning commission and or the city council. And so um but at the same time, limited um businesses is a little tricky. And so my guess is it's something probably like the cannabis line where um the council would have to implement an ordinance that limits the number. Or you put in zoning, you can't say it's not allowed necessarily.
No.
But, but you could have some requirements in there about the number and the zoning and where it has to be. And some signage, maybe you know some real standards about that.
I have another topic when you.
No, I know it's a lot of homework, so I appreciate anything you can bring back.
I'm, I'm just completely off subject, temporary fencing around businesses. I just noticed that there are some businesses that have temporary fencing around their parking lots. Um have, i- is there some rules around that? I don't feel like it's really been addressed, but there's quite a few places that I've noticed temporary fencing that just. It, it doesn't look well visually and.
Yeah, I'd be interested in um if, if any of that addresses come up, showing to me.
You bet.
Most likely they don't, you know, it can apply and, but we could look at it. I, I know. Um I drive one down Beaudalce Road there with the handyman closes. down Beaudalce Road there with the handyman closes his off. I think I've been kind of putting the blinders on, to be blunt, because I know he had that big theft there a couple of years ago.
Right, right.
But at the same time, is it a permanent solution and it should not be, no. And so if there's something out there that we need to address, maybe it's time to address.
Okay.
Anything else, Ben? Not yet. Okay, so thanks, Ben. I know that could have been a little painful, sorry. So report of actions of other commissioners, so Carrie, or, yeah, Carrie, would you like to present anything from Sutter County? Doug's missing it back there, so he's got to get an update. He's like, no, I bet.
Chair, just, you know, I made a statement at last week's public hearing that my legacy as a planning commissioner in Sutter County is going to be predicated on my success or failures on that truck yard issue. I can tell you that the proposal to amend these F-PAC ordinance to allow for truck yards was denied, and I think the application was actually withdrawn. I don't think that it actually went to the board, but I could be wrong. We also had an interesting thing come up at this last meeting. We had two truck yards proposed in ag zones. And much to my chagrin, I found out that you can do, so there are three types of truck yards allowed in the ag zone. An ag truck yard for peach bin trucks and for rice trucks and that type of thing, and then you can also do a small general truck yard and a large general truck yard. So large is anything, I think, over 30, 30 vehicles. One of them was, I think, 100, 104. And the reason I bring that up, and what's interesting about it, and, you know, it's kind of a thing where when you look at something 10 years ago and say, okay, well, we're going to do this, and then 10 years go by and somebody goes, hey, we want to do that, and you're going, well, that may not make much sense. And the reason I bring that up is, you could have two identical parcels, excuse me, one zoned M1, which also allows for general truck yards. However, you have to pave the ingress and egress and parking area in its entirety. The other property that's zoned ag 80 can do the same truck yard, but they can do chip seal. And to put things into perspective, a mile of highway runs about 400,000 for pavement versus 90,000 for chip seal. So there's a huge economic disparity, and my comment was, we're going to see an influx of applications for truck yards in the ag zone. And sure enough, one of the local residents, the one on Wilson Road, got up and said, we've got a neighbor advertising five acre lots for truck yards, and it's in the ag zone. So it's going to be interesting to see how that shakes out. Staff's aware of it, they're going to go back and evaluate it. The other thing that I thought was incredibly interesting was, I think there were eight parking spaces on the one that was 104 truck stalls for vehicle traffic. Those had to be paved, but the rest of the property for trucks that weigh upwards of 60, 70,000 pounds loaded, didn't have to be. So just one of those interesting things to see happen. One was on Garden Highway, right off of Yule Two Door Road, and the other one was on Wilson just west of 99, so, anyway, they went through.
So the one that wasn't approved was the one in Sutter?
Well, that wasn't, that was actually, there wasn't a truck yard proposed, it was a proposal to amend the list of permitted uses in the food processing agricultural section of that, that zone, and the planning commission unanimously rejected that, recommended denial to the county, but I don't think it ever made it to the board supervisor. Yeah, and that's, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.